Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Donna Savigny, President of the Board of Education, and I would like to welcome you to our work session on the FY21 operating budget. This is the next in a series of discussions that we're having about the annual operating budget process. And with that, I will hand it over to Dr. Lockard to give us all an update.
Thank you, President Savigny. Good afternoon and welcome back again for our second work session this afternoon. As you said, Ms. Savigny, this is the first of a series of important dates, and we'll highlight those as it relates to our budget process. If you were watching last month, we came and presented a draft of a five-year sort of outlook around our budget. And we'll be having that conversation with our Board of County Commissioners next week in a joint meeting, as well as a couple other agenda items. And so some of the things that we talked about during that workshop, our work session, you'll see again here in some of what we're presenting. But today is sort of the annual kickoff to the FY21 process. Every December, we come, we talk about revenue estimates, expenditure growth rate assumptions, those important dates, and what's coming. We're also going to talk a little bit about considerations of fund balance. We've already started that conversation. We just want to continue. We're not making any decisions here today. It's informational, conversational for the board and for the public. And so with that, I'll ask Mr. Hartlove to walk us through the next piece.
Good afternoon, Board members. We'll start off with basically what the superintendent was just speaking to. We'll talk about revenue estimates and expenditure estimates, considerations for fund balance use, and important dates. Start off with revenue, and we'll talk more about this in a moment. But the actual number that we're using, we'll be using going forward for county revenue is 203.4 million, which represents a $6.6 million, $166,000 increase over the current year, and that is equivalent to a 3.126 percent. And we'll talk in a little bit more detail in a moment about county revenue. And that comes right out of their plan that they adopted back in the spring.
And that's, again, repetitive from what we talked about at last month's work session as we look out across the next several years.
Right. No change from the work session.
The 3.126 percent is basically the effect, it's the levelized percent that the commissioners were able to provide in the five-year projection.
Correct. Each year in their five-year plan, we get a 3.126 percent increase. And that's for planning purposes, we feel like that's really helpful. So state non-restricted revenue, this is probably the item that we have the least amount of information at this point. Another item that we brought forward from the discussion about the operating plan, we're looking at a 3.7 percent increase or four-point, which equates to a $4.9 million increase. For context, last year, our increase was 3.95 percent. So we're looking at a comparable increase, at least at this early date.
And as Chris said, you know, that's our biggest unknown. A lot changes over the course of a year, a lot can change in the next couple of months until we're more firm about the state. And there's other factors that play into that, the state funding. So we're doing our, I guess, our best in terms of, as we talked about, estimates at this point.
Correct. And as we go through the presentation today, the big focus for us right now in the Budget Office is the January release of the superintendent's proposed operating budget. That's our next big step in the process. We will be using that time to revise the numbers and try to come up with the most accurate numbers at that point in time. These are what we have today, but they may, can, and may be different when we see, when we roll the budget out in January.
And so, Mr. Hartlove, I mean, a lot of this is a timing exercise, right? Where it's, you basically have to be putting budget projections out before the state numbers are finalized, before the county really has their numbers finalized, right? So it's kind of like a circle of moving parts.
Correct.
Over the next couple of months.
Correct.
But these state revenue projections, are they based on, so I know we'll start seeing more concrete student enrollment numbers in January.
Correct.
But are these based on our expectation of those numbers for next year, or based on last year's projection?
These are actually, we pulled this right out of the plan.
Okay.
In the plan, we used a 3.7 percent increase for each year. We will, we'll have finalized enrollment, and we'll have some, we'll actually have finalized, let me step back, once the governor's budget comes out in January, we'll have a much better view or understanding of state revenue at that point in time. It's not final at that point, but it's, that's a fairly accurate number. So in January, we'll have a much better idea of state revenue.
So we know we'll probably have to make adjustments, as this is just an estimate.
Correct.
And as the process goes, as, you know, we experienced last year, learning throughout the course of the, you know, from now until, you know, April-ish, we're refining those figures.
Right. The first step is an estimate, second step is based on the governor's budget, and then the last step is after the legislative process and any changes that come about through that So those are our two major revenue sources. Expenditure estimates, this is another item that we brought forward from the operating plan work session. And I'd say that that was a tip, we don't usually have that session because this is a new operating plan for us. So that's why this is a little bit redundant. Typically, this is the first time we're talking about the operating budget. So it's a little bit, it's not as fresh this year as it would be, you know, in another year.
Although it's a little nice to be ahead of the process a little bit.
There's no doubt, having the discussion of the operating plan really has moved our whole process up a little bit, and, you know, maybe we won't be in, over the break, quite as much, which is a good thing. Growth rate assumptions. I'll talk about employee health costs, retiree health costs, student transportation costs and utilities first, and then I'll talk about general operating last. Employee health costs, there's a share of health costs between the board and the employee. It's an 85-15 percent split. The Board of Education covers 85 percent. That estimate of a 4.5 percent increase is brought forward from our operating plan at this point in time. This is definitely a number that will be revised, but that plan number was based on recent history and projected growth rates. Retiree health costs are estimated based upon actuarial assumptions and history. And they're also projected to grow at 4.5 percent. Student transportation costs, that's a formula-driven number. The formula covers fuel, maintenance, per-vehicle allotment, driver and assistant pay, and there's a factor also for administration. This is another one where we brought this forward from the plan, and based upon recent history and projected growth, we're looking at 2.5 percent. Utilities continues to be good news. It's been, you kind of bailed us out many years of our plan in the past when we had some budgetary issues. And right now, the Board recently locked into electricity and natural gas rates that will get us through the upcoming year and beyond with favorable rates for us. So we're looking not only at this upcoming year, but actually years out in the plan. We're looking at flat right now. And the only thing, the variable will be not the rates, but the usage. So if you have an incredibly warm spring or an incredibly cold winter, that impacts utilities, but the rates are locked in. So that's good news.
And that's been a continually good news item in the award of bids many, many months over the last couple of years.
No doubt. I think, you know, if you look at this, our utility bills over the last five to 10 years have actually reduced quite a bit, and it's because of favorable rates that we've bid and the movement towards more fuel-efficient, more energy-efficient systems as we replace those, and they help to keep the usage down. So those combination causes allows for savings. And then last, but certainly not least, is general operating. We are looking at, there's many items in here, the largest being salary, but it also covers all of our supplies and materials, our hourly and sub dollars, our non-public placements, equipment. There's a lot of other things that are kind of in that general operating. Basically, anything that wasn't, we didn't just go through is included in general operating. And again, this is looking at recent history and projected growth, and we're looking at a 3 percent increase there. An important note is that salaries will be determined through the negotiations process. And so that's, but again, this is similar to what we had talked about at the, when we talked about the operating plan. All right. So in summary, I feel like I would say, and I probably overuse this, but cautiously optimistic, I feel good about where we are at this point. Can't say enough about the revenue commitment from the commissioners, which gives us a predictable revenue, numbers that we can plan on, so we're very happy about that from a planning perspective. As we've already covered, we will have more accurate state revenue numbers when the governor's budget is released in January. So that's an important point. And then I think probably the most important thing here is based upon what we've talked about so far, we believe that there will be funds available for some of our strategic initiatives. And that is really the first time we've been able to realistically address strategic initiatives in over a decade. So that's, I think, this is, going into this process, we're in a better position than I think we've been in any of our budget processes in the last decade.
And I'd also like to make a comment about, I know that we've gone through a lot of zero-based budgeting exercises, which has actually freed up, I believe. Anecdotally, I've heard that there have been some funds that have been freed up to use in other ways that we might have previously had to throw money at it from a strategic initiative perspective, but we've actually been able to just build it in as part of the zero-based budgeting exercises.
Right. We're continuing to work on that. We are trying to identify as many efficiencies as possible by, you know, Chris and his team have done a great job of working with our departments and our leaders in those departments at really taking a look, probably the first time in a long time, using this process in where we can create those efficiencies to support our broader strategic initiatives.
And I think it was all kicked off by conversations, really, I think, the first year in, Dr. Lockard kind of was looking at our process. And then over the summer, we talked about, you know, we know we can request additional revenue for initiatives, but is there any other way we can address some of the things that we want to do in the system? And so we started talking about reprioritization of dollars that we already have. And that's really what this process is. It's saying, you know, if we have higher priority items that we're not doing, and we're spending money on lower, very, probably very important things, very good things, but maybe not quite the priority of some of the other items, maybe we should have that conversation about moving some of those dollars towards the higher priority items. Again, we will always, we're always going to be advocating for the school system and trying to get the dollars that we need. But once you get what you get, you have to say, okay, how do we put all these dollars towards the highest priority items? And that's what the process kind of has been. So we talked, we've talked a little bit about fund balance. I think we talked a little bit about it at the operating plan work session. To give you the, kind of the specifics of where we are, right now, as of your June 30th, 2019 audited financial statements, we have $16 million in fund balance. That represents 4.76 percent of the unrestricted operating budget. And if you look at the board's policy, Policy DBDA on fund balance reserves, that's exactly kind of where we want to be. The maximum per that policy is 5 percent of the unrestricted operating budget, which would be 16.8 million. And the kind of the floor where we comfortably want to be is 3.1 percent, or 3.4 million dollars. So 16 million puts us in the range where we want to be. It's at the higher range, and that is a good thing because it means we are, it helps us in any kind of potential downturns going forward, and it also represents some opportunity to look at some things that need to be addressed in the system. And so it's a good thing. It's there as kind of a security for bad times, but also it has some opportunity to address some items, and we'll talk about those in the next couple of slides. These first three, we did talk about during the operating plan, and we feel like, you know, these are critical items and that we want to get started with. There's been some conversations about even trying to maybe get them started this year. So that may be, you know, potential, again, these are considerations, no decisions have been made. But they're important items that we believe that we could at least phase into using fund balance for, not forever using fund balance, but for a phase-in of these positions. So those are not new, they were in the discussion at the operating plan work session. The new slide for this work session is the additional fund balance considerations. And these are the things that, there's nothing really new here. These are things that have been concerns for us for over a number of years. They're things because of shortfalls in our budget. Where we had dollars in our operating budget, those were reduced in order to balance the budget. And so one of the challenges that we have is, for instance, vehicle replacement. We tend to try to utilize dollars that we have available at the end of the year for vehicle replacement, and that can help us out quite a bit. But for instance, this year, this fiscal year, we had two of those dollars, two of those vehicles we weren't able to address through year-end, and we ended up using fund balance. So that $16 million actually doesn't take into account, that was at the audited fund balance, audited financial statement. Since then, we've actually procured two vehicles that we thought were very critical for this upcoming winter, that were approved by the Board of Ed and then also the Board of County Commissioners. But that's been a challenge for us for a number of years. So we certainly see more needs in the vehicle area upcoming. And right now, within the operating budget, there's really no way of addressing that. So fund balance would be a good use, that would be a good use of fund balance.
Right. Yep. So that's a perfect example, that first one, because we've actually already just done that. The, after the last work session, there was a question from somewhere, like what have been, or what are some other ways in which the board could consider utilizing fund balance? It's tricky because, as you said earlier, Chris, you want to, we have a policy for a reason, so that we do have some sort of contingency, because that's all we have, contingency-wise. But at the same time, we're pushing up against the ceiling of what we said. So trying to look thoughtfully and carefully, and then, so I said, let's put a couple other things, just so the board sees and can have conversation if they want to, not to make any decisions today, but what could some potential other considerations be as we think about our strategic plan and some of the priorities that we're focused on? So we wanted to make sure that we at least mentioned a few of those other things that could be possible considerations.
Yeah. And I think that is really a good point, that we are heading up against the top of that range. And so we should, if we want to spend it wisely, like any other decision, planning and discussion is the best way to, you know, to make good decisions with it.
Kind of along with that, what, historically, what's that fund balance been like over the last 10 years? And again, I know you're probably comfortable with 16 million, but what's comfortable? 3 percent? How much of emergency do you need? What's your feeling on what the fund balance should be maintained at?
Those are, I think, both good questions. 2008, I believe, is when we could actually, we had the MOU with the county government to allow us to have fund balance. And at first, we didn't have fund balance, so there were years of us building it up, you know? And building it up is not a conscious effort. We don't build a budget and say, okay, we're going to have X dollars left at the end of the year, and we're going to put that into fund balance. It's kind of something that happens through necessity. We cannot overspend our budget. So if you can't overspend your budget, which we wouldn't want to do anyway, but when you can't overspend your budget, it's, and without manipulating, you can't come in at zero. It's just impossible because, you know, the fiscal year ends, and you can't, we, that would be, you know, I'd probably have a heart attack if every year we were, you know, we were approaching zero every year, but we can't go over, you know? So you have to have some cushion in your fund, in your operating budget, which then leads to having dollars left which go into the fund balance. But we don't purposely build the fund balance. So that's kind of, so the history is, is we first built, it built up, and then we started thinking about some uses. And we had uses such as, I believe we had a year where the diesel fuel spiked up. So we went, and we didn't have adequate operating dollars to cover the diesel fuel for buses. So we went to the commissioner, we went to the Board of Ed. Board of Ed said, that's a great idea, that's what we need to do. Went to the commissioners, they said, fine. And we used that, and that's what, that's the contingency type of thing that we're looking, looking to do. We also, in years where we weren't able to give any salary increases, there was that stretch of period where we were in post-recession, and then when we were losing enrollment, where we were having some challenging years, and we utilized the fund balance for bonuses. We've used it to fund some of these other things that we're talking about, infrastructure renewal, technology, infrastructure, security. So we've used it, I think, for some really good purposes. As far as, so kind of the history is, is it's been with, once we got, once we were able to establish a fund balance, we've been in the range of the 1 to 5 percent. And I think that's, we kind of put the policy together, so that the comfortable range is the 1 to 5 percent. You said at the beginning, 16 million is where I want to be. I'd like to be at 16.8 always, and just stay at 16.8. But, you know, that's because, you know, that's the conservative nature of what I'm supposed, that's my job, that's what I'm supposed to do. But I also understand that we have needs. And if we have needs and we have means to meet those needs, and we're well within our range, at the top of our range, then we should start to strategically and purposefully come up with a plan to utilize those dollars in a smart manner. And a smart manner is for items that are most aligned with fund balance. So I don't know if I got your, answered your question.
Oh, yeah.
So the answer is 16.8 million is what I think I'm comfortable with.
[laughing]
It's in that range of 1 to 5 percent is the good range. Anywhere in that range, I'm comfortable.
The only other time that I can think of, just sitting here, that we went to fund balance for use was in order to create some flexibility in one year's operating budget. We had a lease on a performance contract that had two years left.
Yes, yes.
And we earmarked or assigned the necessary fund balance to pay off those last two years of the lease, because then that created that amount of room in the operating budget to help balance the next two years' budgets. I think that's it. I don't remember any other use.
What about the purchase of the Winchester Building?
We did, you did that as well.
Well, there's that.
Yes. When you start to go back and look at it, I, you know, you forget about the little, the items. But I feel good about all of the uses that we've done in the past. They've all been, we've used it for one-time items, for critical need items, bridging, bridging in tough times. We've used it for short periods of time to not, you know, there was a year where we actually, it helped us to not have to lay a bunch of our employees off. And we used it with a plan to not say, we're going to do this forever. We said, okay, this gives us a little bit of time to plan on a constructive way. Oh, that's another. We used it for incentives, retirement incentives in some of those tough years. We said, okay, we need to reduce a number of staff. We, you know, so that, so those are, there's a bunch of things that we've done to use it.
For the three bullets, subbullets in the middle, or the second bullet, however you want to look at that, and really, the last big bullet basically relates to the infrastructure renewal sub-bullet, barring just tremendous growth in the future, we really set on a course in fiscal year 18, I believe, yes, or the year before you came, Steve, fiscal year 17, to occasionally go to fund balance to supplement those three projects, assuming the commissioners could do anything in those projects. And then one they do, and in others, they haven't been able to yet. We stripped, for instance, we stripped all of the remaining money out of the operating budget for local maintenance projects. So don't, not your CIP, not building schools, not that sort of thing, but doing all those smaller maintenance needs that our schools have. We removed all of that money, and at the same time, the Board of Ed, and I think, Donna and Marcia, you would have been here for that one boat, earmarked some money from fund balance into infrastructure renewal technology. And the thought was, we'll see how long that will sustain us. And if we grow by 300 kids a year, and CPI is 6 percent or something, maybe we can rebuild the operating budget. But if not, we're going to have to occasionally go back to looking at those projects. And just for the easiest example, the Westminster brick facade situation has put significantly more pressure on that first line item than we would have thought. And there will always be something like that. So this year, or maybe next year, sometime soon, it's going to be a time to maybe look at that again with you at the end of a budget year. And maybe every three or so fiscal years need to continue to do that over time. But at the same time, that's not a bad use because it's a one-time use, and you're putting it in a place where you can access it as needed. The commissioners seem okay with that process, they've been on board with it. But it also takes pressure off of the operating budget, or allows us to try to use the operating budget and the capital budget in concert with each other, because if we can pay for some technology things with capital money, then that frees up or makes available a little bit of operating money over here to do something else that's needed in the same area. So that's probably an ongoing consideration.
So, yeah. So I feel like we're in a really good place, and the challenge really is making good decisions with the dollars. And that's why, thus the, you know, the discussion, and just kind of throwing it out there to say, okay, maybe we should start that talk about this. And so we address it in a strategic manner.
Right. And I think, Kenny, to your question earlier, I think it's important to be cognizant of the fact that the fund balance has been growing steadily, right? And we've had that money available, we have used it in strategic ways, right? With the purchase of the Winchester Building, with the payment of, the early payment of the leases to free up some of the operating budget, with incentives, with the vehicles. of the leases to free up some of the operating budget, with incentives, with the vehicles. So, there've been, there've been various points along the way where we've made strategic uses of that. But the reason we were able to make strategic uses of it is because it has been growing over time, right? So, I don't think it's out of the ordinary for us to be, if we're at 6, we're pushing up against that ceiling.
Correct.
So, we have been able to purposely add to it every year, right? That balance has been increasing, even though we've been using it
No doubt.
in strategic ways, so.
Use it, it's still grown, so, yes.
Right, and, and part of that is possible, because we have been actively managing the operating budget every year, very tightly, right? So, but that's given us the opportunity to have these dollars available. Like, okay, now we do need to start planning specifically how we're gonna use it, or how we want to use it to tie into our strategic initiatives.
That's right.
And the other thing I would say is, is that part of the zero-based budgeting that we were talking about earlier, is also looking for places where, you know, maybe there was, maybe there is a little bit too much cushion in, in one operating budget area, and saying, "Okay, do," you know, because we don't want to have, we, we, we have to have money left at the end of the year. We want to have money left at the end of the year, but we don't want to have too much. Because that tells us, if we had to make cuts, or we weren't able to do something that was important to the school system, but at the end of the year, we ended up with having money left, that's not what we want to do, because, you know, that's just, that's, something didn't get done that could have gotten done. So, we're trying to make sure that we have adequate budget, and that everything's covered, and we don't go over our budget, but at the same time, that we don't build in too much cushion where we end up having a lot of money left at the end.
And I think we've been good about that, and for your sake, but anybody who might eventually watch this, it's not in a policy, it might be in a Gatsby statement, but our informal goal is to try to always end a fiscal year in about 1% of the budget. So, you're not overspending what you can't do, you're not getting too close to give Chris a heart attack, but within 1% is pretty good. And so, when you think about that, that's gonna be somewhere around $2 to $4 million in year-end on a $300 and some million budget a year. So, that's the amount of surplus or year-end money that's gonna go to fund balance in a typical year.
I think that's a, a good explanation, John. You know, when we're talking about $360 million, I try to boil it down to, if I went to the grocery store, and I knew I had $360 to spend, I might end up using a coupon, or might not need exactly everything, or something was on sale during that year that I visited the, the store, I might come home with a dollar, which is about what we're talking about here. And so, that's where that fund balance ends up, ends up coming into play.
And there were years prior to having fund balance where we felt a lot of pressure, because we didn't get to keep the dollars that were allocated to us at the end of the year. But we also didn't want to spend them frivolously, so there was never a right answer. You either, if you left money, left money on the table at the end of the year, it was like, "Wow, we turned that money back, and we're never gonna see that money again." And if you quickly tried to spend it, so you were down to zero, then it's like, "Well, did we do the most responsible thing for the school system, for the taxpayers?" So, having this fund balance allows you to, you know, not do that. Because it's not a, you know, it's, it's okay to have money left at the end of the year, because we know it's going into our fund balance, and then we can, in a more structured manner, we can spend it.
Right, and I didn't realize that the fund balance was as recent as 2008, that that was created, so.
Yep.
And I think that MOU's been revisited, maybe not re-signed officially, but revisited. The county looked at it two years ago, I think.
Yeah, I believe so.
And, and it's the very, it may not be literally the same language, but it's pretty darn close to the county's MOU on fund balance with the community college and the library system as well. So, the, we're three of the public agencies they, they fund, and we all have, if not the same, a very similar arrangement with them. And I think it works well for all three of, of the agencies. And then, I'll take a stab at Mr. Kyler's question, because, you know, I'm a little more flexible than Chris, wanting to stay at 5% every time. I would just say, in all seriousness, it's the only reserve you have. And if you delve more into what policy DBDA, I think, says, there are three specific set-asides. So, in addition to being between 1% and 5%, you're, you're supposed to always maintain a certain, is it a tenth of a percent?
It's a third, it's a third of a percent for those three items.
A third of a percent for, you know, for utilities, for healthcare, and for transportation services. And so, you know, you, but, but I would say you would never want to go that low, because it's the only reserve you have. So, if you had something terrible, like a fire in a school, or, you know, part of a roof collapse, or just something no one would hope would ever happen, but if we did, that's the only place you have to go without begging for a supplemental appropriation from the commissioners. And so, for me, staying somewhere in the double-digit range is probably, you know, I wouldn't want to see it go below 10 million, at least not for very long, and try to keep it in that, that range to the cap. And Chris would certainly more permanently want it to be higher than that. He wasn't completely joking about that, but I guess what I'm saying is, you don't want to just spend it down, because you know it will slowly grow again. You have nothing else to do if something bad really did happen somewhere.
I mean, ultimately, this is nothing but good. This is not, it's, you know, it's just, the only bad thing would be is if we didn't make good decisions on what we used it for, you know, that's.
Right, and then, I was gonna say, we're, we're doing all the right things from a planning perspective, and that's why I'm glad we're having this conversation in conjunction with the operating budget, though, right? Because doing the five-year budget has, and the commissioners committing to the, the level commitment over that five years has allowed us to plan, and this is another piece of the planning process, right? We know that we're, we're butting up against that ceiling, so now, how do we use the dollars the most effectively, right? And if we know we have some funds available in the fund balance to handle non-recurring things, then we can plan for that in addition to the, the operating budget. So, it, everything's starting to line up from a, from a planning perspective.
Correct. Okay, and then, finally, is just the, the upcoming dates. And the next date is next Monday, I believe. That's the, that's the third of, third and final Town Hall meeting on budget priorities at South Carroll High School. And really, what that represents at that point in time is, is we will have, the superintendent will have had quite a bit of input on the process. Work, couple of work sessions with the board, these town halls. And then, it's now time for us, in the month of, the rest of the month of December, to, to come up with, the superintendent's, or will provide information for the superintendent to ultimately make those decisions that need to be made, and to come out with the first official step in the budget process. And that, on January 8th, superintendent will, will, at a, at the regularly scheduled board meeting, will release the first part of, the first official step in the, in the budget cycle. Then, on the 22nd, here at 125 North Court Street, we'll have an opportunity for public feedback on that step. So, that's the next step, and getting feedback on that step. February 5th, at 6:00 PM, there'll be another hearing here at 125 North Court Street, and then followed by a board work session. So, what's happening at this point, the ball's kind of transitioning to the board, because it's, now the board has the superintendent's proposed budget, a couple of, of hearings on the budget to kind of hear the public's feedback of the superintendent's budget, probably some more information, like the governor's, the governor's budget will have come out, will have some other, any other information that kind of happens up to that date. And now, the board will have to start discussing, you know, the next step. And that step will be at the regularly scheduled February 12th board meeting. You will adopt your, your budget request, which then goes to the county commissioners for review, and, and then they have questions for us. There's an agency hearing after that, there's other steps. But those are kind of the upcoming, what, what's on the radar for the next couple of months regarding the, the, the operating budget.
And we do have the, the next joint meeting with the commissioners a week from tomorrow
Yep, next Thursday.
on their turf this time, right?
No, it's over here.
It's over here at this time, okay. And so, I presume that we'll be sharing a lot of this information with them, giving them a, a bird's eye view of, of where we think we stand for the FY '21.
The five-year plan is the agenda item that's.
The draft, yeah, five-year plan, yep. Which gives insight to what, what we're talking about here today, for sure.
Right, and, and I appreciated your comments to open up the, the work session today, Dr. Lockard, about the, the five-year, it feels like we're a little bit ahead of the, the game this year, because of doing all of the work behind the five-year projection. This tends to be the first time, in, in prior years, this was the first time that we would be seeing anything operational budget-related. But now, it feels like we're ahead of the game, because we've already had those discussions. We have already talked about the board, our priorities, and, and you had put forth the strategic initiatives that you were planning to embark on, and we gave our impressions of our priorities of those, of those potential strategic initiatives. So, it, it feels like we're in a good spot right now. What, if anything, additional direction do you need from us, the board, at this point in time in order to further the process?
I, I don't know that I do. We've had a couple of work sessions, we're gonna get more feedback. I think it'll be, you know, at our, then after the proposed budget, and just, you know, our work sessions, and moving to the board adopting. There'll be plenty of opportunity along the way for input and feedback.
I think that's the important point, is that superintendent's proposed budget is just one step. So, even if, hopefully, you, what you see, you're like, "Okay, I'm very comfortable with that, I like that, and, you know, and I'd like to go forward with that." But if you don't, you, there's, it's not like, "Wow, it's done." There's, there's another step for you to, to, to modify.
Covering a couple things down, because, first of all, you always want more, but I, we have not had a working relationship with the commissioners like this. And I, I do not know when. And that was one of our big things that we really wanted to work on, was that relationship. And also with delegation, because it has not been there at all. But I think with this five-year plan, that has put us way ahead of the game. We have never sat here and talked about this before at this date. And I think that has really, really helped. And it's also helped with our, with our, with our delegation. And we do have the big unknown of the, of the blueprint. We don't know what money we're getting there, but that five-year plan is a guide. And I think that has really made us very transparent, what we're doing, where we're going forward. And there, yes, there are some unknowns, but I, we are way ahead of the game. I think we're spending smart, because of, of what we bought, you know? We own this building now. Never in a million years would I have thought that the Carroll County Board of Education would own their own building, and that Dr. Lockard had to fill that pothole first week. And I remember that. But, you know, these things, I mean, we have, we have made great strides in this, and it wasn't like that several years ago. We had a wonderful town meeting that we had at, at Westminster High School, and we had a lot of people participate. And of course, you know, special ed's my, my thing, and, you know, and we talked about a lot of things. And that, that was brought to our attention, it wasn't brought to it at Francis Scott Key, it was a different situation. So, I really hope that people show up at South Carroll. And then, I really do hope that the commissioners and the delegates signed up to shadow, because I want them to see what goes on in these classes, you know? When they can do that, but, you know, to see our needs. But we are so far ahead of what we, we have done in the past. And that makes a really good rapport from across, rather than being hostile and that. Working together makes it so much easier. And I want to thank everybody for sharpening their pencils. I've been up there in that finance office, and they're scratching away, and other offices are scratching away, and thank you for that, because we, we do need to get that, you know, and that makes us more transparent. And I want to thank everybody, because I, I, I think we're, you're doing the right thing, and you're all doing the right thing, and thank you so much. And I'm Lockard this, this session.
Well, we're on a, I, I think the discussions around the, the five-year plan have been really fruitful, and it seems like we're on a sustainable path now, right? Like, we've, we had a really rough couple of years, worked through those rough spots, and now we are on a sustainable path from both an operating budget and a CIP perspective, right? We've got the, the career and tech project moving, we, we think we have consensus on how we're gonna move forward on East Middle, so everything's kind of progressing well at this point.
And I appreciate you referencing, thank you, Ms. Seving, I appreciate you referencing the town halls. We still have difficult decisions to make. We, we have, you know, resources, and we want to be careful stewards of the community's resources. That's why we're having all these conversations. We have a lot of passionate advocates for things that they want to see more of, that we want to do more of, and we completely understand that. And so, our, our challenge is, you know, recognizing how, how best to move forward with, with finite resources in supporting the needs of our, our students, with our employee compensation, the goals of our strategic plan. So, that will be the challenge. It's nice not to be talking about a list of cuts, right?
Yes, yeah, we have been through that.
But it's not, it's not, you know, we, we'd love to do everything at once. We recognize we have to be realistic and have to be strategic about how we, how we go about doing that. I, I still think that's a better position to be in, obviously, than, than what I've just mentioned of, "Okay, how do we make, you know, how do we, how do we make these ends meet by cutting our way there?" So, I'm stating the obvious, I know.
But from a, from, I, I appreciate all the discussion today as well on the, the fund balance and potential uses of that. That doesn't necessarily have to be tied to the timing of the operating budget, though, right? I mean, if, if throughout this planning process, we decide, "Okay, this is the best way forward on, on spending some dollars," like, we have a plan of this is what we intend to spend of fund balance and how we want to do it, that, that can happen at any time, right? It does not need to be tied to approval of the operating budget.
Correct, it would only require a budget adjustment here from, from you, and then a budget, or approval of that budget adjustment within 30 days from the commissioners.
Or the, or the actual budget process itself. We can also do it within, if you, if you, within the budget process, if we say we're going to use fund balance, and we, and the, and the board approves that, and then that also goes to the commissioners. So, those are the two ways, it's either a budget adjustment or through the traditional operating budget process.
Nor would they be exclusive of each other. So, for instance, you could say, "Yeah, we do want to put some more money in that infrastructure renewal account, because it needs it." You probably, it would probably make the most sense to do that as part of your budget approval. But if you said to Dr. Lockard, you know, "You gotta buy that dump truck," or, "We're gonna move forward, that, one of those positions or all those positions by, forward, so let's get that started sooner than later," it might make more sense to do that with a budget adjustment. It doesn't have to be one way or the other, it could be some of each, depending on the item you want to address.
So, let's say the superintendent's budget proposes some of the strategic plan things worth $4 million. Once the operating budget's approved, those pieces don't have to go to the commissioners.
Correct.
That's approved, just anything be, then, then if you decide, "Well, we need two more trucks," that goes to the commissioners as it's spent.
If you, yes, or anything that you would want to do outside of the annual approval of the budget would then be a budget adjustment within that fiscal year.
But anything in the annual budget from, from fund balance is already approved.
Incorporated into the budget adoption.
So, Mr. Harlock, can you remind me of the size of our overall fleet?
Wow, that's a good question, probably a better John, a question for John than.
For, for vehicles, I kind of think about it in three parts. We have some staff vehicles, but by my account, my experience is not many, and it's limited just to people whose job requires them to be in a vehicle. And so, that's your pupil personnel workers, your transportation, the folks that go out and check the roads in the morning and go to bus accidents, and Mr. Williams. And I think that's it.
Okay.
And then, in facilities, and I don't, I don't know, do you know how many PPWs there are off the top of your head, eight maybe? 10 at the most? There's not a ton of, all totaled, that's less than 20 vehicles there. And then, in the maintenance shop, we have any number of work vans or? 60 or fewer, and that's dump trucks, work vans, all of the trades vans that go out and service the schools. So, my guess would be less than 100, Donna, total in the whole.
Less than 100 total for both sides?
We do have a couple of staff, what would you call them, like pool vehicles for teacher recruitment trips and things like that, but there's maybe three or four total, and they sit in the designated parking spots across the street.
And we have a van, and the, which, those are all the things that are, are good for us to keep our mileage cost down, because folks, instead of using their personal vehicles, they, when they leave from here to go to a meeting, they use one of the pool vehicles or the, or the van, if it's a larger group.
Okay, so, over the years, you said that we've had a hard time trying to replace those vehicles in a reasonable timeframe. So, would you say, so we had the same issue with facilities, right? Like, our facilities were getting older, we didn't have the, the CIP projects in the hopper to keep them up, right? So, was the same thing happening to the fleet?
To an extent, so we've tried to be strategic in years, even in the very terrible years of cutting, we've tried to say, in a given year, if we have any year-end surplus in one category, year-end savings in one category, the most desperate vehicles, can we get some of those replaced? And so, in some years, we've replaced maybe four or five, and in other... And so, in some years, we've replaced maybe four or five, and in other years, none. And then we try to come back to it when we need to. The dump trucks were, were critical, not just for, I mean, I always think about them as snow removal. Ray and Mike Andrews would be quick to remind me, they also use them throughout the year, John. And that's fair. I mean, that's a fair thing for them to say to me. But in my mind, that if we don't have those dump trucks for snow removal, that's going to be a big, big problem. And we simply did not have the year-end savings this past year to replace them. So, it's gotten sort of to that point where it would, it would be nice to be more proactively strategic in how we replace them instead of waiting until the bitter end and then saying, "If we don't do this, it could be a really bad thing." And we just don't have a line item budgeted for that. The only way we've been able to try to do it is year-end savings. So, using fund balance is much more flexible than that and lets us address something before it gets to the bitter end.
And to piggyback on that, I think what really is, no pun intended, driving this situation is that this last year, we thought we were going to be able to do a certain number of vehicles at a year-end, and we, two of them, we couldn't do. And that was the first time we weren't able to address all the vehicle needs. And we, and so, we said, using our, kind of the way we operate currently, we'd say, "Okay, we got to wait until next year-end and see if we can do the two vehicles then." And then we started having discussions. We talked about a CIP option. That became a non-starter. So, then we thought, "Well, why don't we just go straight to fund balance and use, use it?" And so, I think it's, I think the word proactive, I think, is, as opposed to doing things as we have dollars.
It also means we don't have to not do something at a school that needs to be done. Because the only other option would be to spend operating money and then something doesn't get done at a school that year from a maintenance standpoint. And that's the last thing we would ever do. So, this became the, honestly, Donna, this became the only remaining option we could find was the fund balance. And it won't be, you know, it won't be much and it won't be necessarily even every year, but a couple of vehicles every couple of years will, will keep the fleet, you know, keep the fleet current. And we do have standards, mileage standards and maintenance standards. When it got to the two dump trucks, I feel like $10,000 is the number in my mind. I had an estimate from maintenance to, just to get that one dump truck back on the road was going to cost at least $10,000. And I told them, "Just to park it, let's see if we can figure out a way to replace it," because that's, that's getting crazy at that point.
Well, so, I'm really glad that we're talking about all of this holistically, though, because, I mean, so, we're building the technology plan, we're building the infrastructure plan, we're talking about a plan to replace the fleet. Like, so, the fact that we're looking holistically at all the levers that we have to pull and it's working, it's working well at the moment. So, it feels like we're having all the right discussions, so. Appreciate that. Board members, any other questions or comments?
I guess I just want to echo again the benefits that we're really seeing with looking out with this five-year plan. It's very, very helpful, so. Kudos and thanks for all of the hard work with making it possible for us, you know?
All right, so I guess we'll be back at the table. So, we have our board meeting a week from today and then the next joint meeting with commissioners on that Thursday. So, we'll be having a lot of discussions on this front over, over the next week and a half or so. All right, thanks very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.